To welcome everybody to the May 10 Village Board Meeting, and at this time, I'd like to ask everybody, please stand for the pledge, and then remain standing for a moment of silence for our armed forces serving throughout the world.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, again, I'd like to welcome everybody to our May 10 Village Board Meeting, and we're going to start off this evening with a public hearing on introductory local law seven of 2018, moratorium on hotels motel. Desiree, could you please read the notice?
A public hearing is being held to entertain public comments on the adoption of a local law instituting a moratorium on the issuance of permits, certificates of occupancy, determinations, decisions, and approvals for hotels and/or motels. The public notice was printed in the Times Herald Record on May 3, 2018.
Thank you. The purpose of this local law is to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the Village of Woodbury and to maintain the status quo while the Board of Trustees analyzes and determines potential appropriate revisions and amendments to the Village of Woodbury Code relative to its zoning regulations applicable to the location, density, height, and other bulk regulations of hotels and motels. With that, I'm going to go out to the -- anybody in the first row?
George Lithgow from Jacobowitz and Gubitz. We represent the owner of the Aon property on Estrada Road. They have a pending application before the planning board. We are actually scheduled to be on the agenda next Wednesday after a interlude that was necessitated due to litigation. I have some very brief comments. I have a letter in the -- that I've submitted to the clerk that goes through the comments in much more detail. Point number one, the moratorium says the reason is that there are five -- the village has notice of five hotels that are pending, one of which I assume is Aon. As far as I'm aware, there are only three applications that are before the various boards of the village. One of those is Aon's. The other two, I believe, involve variances and other things which make it, if not impossible, extremely unlikely that those projects will be able to obtain an approval within the six month period of the moratorium, whether or not the moratorium is enacted. That leaves Aon as the property that's going to be affected by this. Aon has been before the planning board since 2014. It has spent considerable time and effort to secure approvals. It has received a negative declaration at the beginning of 2016 and a reaffirmation of that negative declaration at the end of 2016. When the village adopted local law three of 2011, which recodified your entire zoning law, one of the issues that was raised is it would be unfair to someone who had expended significant time and effort and money to pursue an approval before a board had gotten to the point perhaps of a negative declaration, and then had the rules changed so that they would no longer be able to proceed or to rely upon the resources and the product that had been accomplished before that board. In response, the village indicated, and I believe it did, provide in that local law for grandfathering, provided that an application had received a negative declaration from the planning board. So, we've received two, in a sense, and I think that speaks to the issue of grandfathering, the appropriateness of grandfathering, that particular application, if you do adopt a moratorium law. And I would point out, one of the reasons for grandfathering is that we are going through a review process that is designed to address the issues and impacts that you're speaking of with the moratorium. There is adequate opportunity for conditions to be enacted by the planning board that address any impacts that are identified as a result of that review process. We've been trying to go through that process for two and a half years. We are at the point where I believe we are able to get conditional approval, and it does not appear consistent with the objectives of the moratorium law or the past practice of the village, providing for grandfathering exemption in cases where there had been a substantial expenditure of time and resources. So, we believe this would be an appropriate modification if you do enact the law to include the provision for grandfathering, as you did in 2011. And the final point is, the village's zoning was adopted in 2006, I believe. You carried forward zoning from the town, and this property has been zoned for this particular use as well as many other commercial uses during all that time. It was certainly zoned that way when our client bought it. We are concerned about the message that is sent when the longstanding zoning can be changed simply because there is community opposition, and I completely agree that if there are valid, evidence-based objections, those need to be addressed. That's why you have a zoning law. In this case, the planning board did consider all of those objections in our proposed response to it. They did identify one area of concern. We did do a study. The planning board did reaffirm the negative declaration after that study. I think when you are sending in the message that if our residents object to your proposal, you're going to get zoned into a different use, or that use will not be acceptable, and it'll be rezoned, you're sending a very difficult message for a property owner, because the property owner has to come in, deal with the planning board, and then have a public hearing after perhaps a year, a year and a half, to deal with objections that come from residents, which may be substantive objections, and we have responsibility to address those. But they may also be objections that are basically rooted in the "I like it the way it is, I don't want it to be different," and go away. And that, to me, is not a good basis for inviting people into your community to make that substantial investment of time and effort to get to that point, and then find out that the zoning is going to be changed or modified in a way that makes that investment worthless. So I would ask that you consider those points in your deliberations, and thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody in the second row? Anybody in the third row? That's the fourth row. You get your chance. Anybody in the fourth row? Now you.
William Frank, law firm of Bluestein Shapiro Rich &amp; Barone. Myself, and my client, and Mr. Esposito previously appeared before the village board. We don't have an application that's been submitted yet. We came in for a preliminary discussion about a potential hotel project a month or two back, and we understand that there's this consideration of the moratorium, which our client does not necessarily object to, understanding that the regulations governing hotels and motels need some adjustment for certain projects that have not -- that may be pending, and some that may be in the works, like our client, who is a potential contract vende for some property. I really don't have comments on the moratorium itself, more in lines of a question, and I don't know if the board's prepared to answer it this evening, but I'll ask it anyway, just so I can report to my client, who couldn't be here this evening. I understand the proposed moratorium is for a six-month period. Has there been any -- have there been any steps undertaken as of yet to either have initial drafts of new regulations, or any work with any outside consultants or planners to discuss the issues that need to be addressed, or is that something that's going to happen after the moratorium is instituted, if it's voted on? Are you able to answer that, or?
I could just say that that process has started.
Okay, yeah, that was my question. Okay, so, obviously, the initial -- is it the sense that, right now, that the six months would be sufficient, hopefully, based on what you've already started in the process?
Hopefully.
Okay. That really, the reason I ask is, you know, certain contingencies have to be built in to our potential deal to make sure we allow enough time for the village to do what needs to be done, and so everyone has some comfort level. That's why I asked that question.
I understand, and I'm not really prepared to answer that question right now. We're going to try to move through this process as quickly as possible while taking a hard look, so, you know, it's going to take some time.
Understood. I appreciate that feedback, and I thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anybody else in the fourth row? Anybody at all? Going once, twice, three times?
Yeah, I didn't want to say that, because I'm a professional.
Sure.
Something new.
All right, then, in that case, could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Make that motion.
That was Neil.
Welcome back, Neil.
And I second it.
Law in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now I'm going to ask for a motion to adopt local law number three of 2018, entitled Moratorium Hotel Motel.
Three? Seven? Seven?
Nope.
No, I mean three.
It's adopted local law three.
It's not introductory.
It's introductory local law seven.
Right, okay. Okay, just checking.
Didn't we go through this last time, Mr. Frank?
Oh, first.
Yes, we did.
I got lost here. Okay, I got a motion.
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
I just -- trustee Flood made that motion, or trustee Mikhelyajak?
Trustee Mikhelyajak.
Okay.
I can't say his name.
I can. I think I did pretty good. Okay, trustee Mikhelyajak?
Aye.
Trustee Kraus?
Aye.
Trustee Flood?
Aye.
Trustee Egan?
Aye.
Mayor Quinan?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, if that wasn't enough for you, we're going to have another public hearing, because this is so exciting. This one is on introductory local law number eight of 2018, Parking Prohibited. Desiree, could you please read the notice?
A public hearing is being held to entertain public comments on the adoption of a local law amending Chapter 227 of the village code entitled Parking Prohibited by setting parking restrictions on Peroni Circle, intersection of Smith Close Road and Valley Avenue. The public notice was printed in the Times Herald Record on May 3, 2018.
Thank you. The purpose of this local law is to enable customers of the businesses and services in this specific area of the village to park. Currently, there are vehicles that are parked in this location all day long, which defeats the purpose of having business area in this part of the village. The residents will not be affected by this proposed law, since the restriction will be enforced Monday to Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. only. So, in other words, residents living in the area will be able to park there overnight. Anyway, with that, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Anybody in the first row? Anybody in the second row? Anybody in the third row? Anybody in the fourth row? Anybody at all? Going once, going twice, going three times?
A lady.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adopt local law number four of 2018, entitled Parking Prohibited.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Mike, just a question on that?
Sure.
Is, if there's particular business owners who are there during the day that have to keep their businesses open, would some allowance possibly be made for them, like maybe a single, like a parking permit or something?
Well, the short answer to that would be no.
Okay.
You know? I mean, no, it's parking is to help the business owners, so, you know, it's going to be, I believe, a two-hour limit. Okay, so, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
Trustee Mikhelyajak?
Aye.
Trustee Kraus?
Aye.
Trustee Flood?
C.
Trustee Egan?
Aye.
Mayor Quinan?
Aye.
Okay, next up, we're dealing with administrative business, so could I have a motion to accept the minutes of our meeting held April 26, 2018?
Make the motion. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I have to abstain, I wasn't here.
Well, you don't have to abstain if you don't want to. If you read them.
I did read them.
Then you don't have to, but you can if you choose to.
Okay, I'll go aye then.
Okay.
All right, that was five voting.
Welcome back, man. He liked what he read?
Desiree, could you please read abstract number 23?
Abstract 23 contains vouchers 172047 through 172123, and totals $157.05.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Motion to approve abstract number 23?
Make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have some budget modifications, so we have a motion to approve a $244,485 budget modification, general fund for various departments, per clerk Potvin memo dated May 7.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We should probably just clarify that this is to cover, to modify over expenditures, since we're coming to the end of our fiscal year. It's not for any particular purpose, just to cover, correct some over expenditures on specific line items. All of these modifications for that.
Thank you. Okay, motion to approve a $403,950 budget modification, general fund, highway department, per clerk Potvin's memo dated May 7.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve a $3,910 budget modification, consolidated water, per clerk Potvin memo dated May 7.
Make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve a $6,130 budget modification, consolidated sewer, per clerk Potvin memo dated May 7.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, copies of these memos are on our website. Okay, next up, a motion to authorize the mayor, which is me, and village clerk, which is Desiree, to sign the fiscal year 2018, 2019 collecting offices warrant totaling $6,777,990.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we have a motion to approve the appointment of Kurt Vilekris.
Yep.
Did I get that right?
Pretty close.
All right, good enough.
Also known Justice Kurt.
Oh.
So, recall.
As a seasonal laborer with the highway department from June 4, 2018, to September 28, 2018, this seasonal position will be 40 hours per week, and will be paid $15 an hour.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion to approve fire department equipment request, 2018-14 totaling approximately $26,970.29 for the purchase of various turnout gear.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I have another motion to approve 2018-15 totaling approximately $9,316 for the purchase of upgrading emergency lighting for L503.
Make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Desiree, could you please read the 2018-2019 holiday schedule?
I can. The following dates, the village offices will be closed for holidays. July 4, which is a Wednesday, for Independence Day. September 3, which is a Monday, for Labor Day. October 8, which is a Monday, for Columbus Day. November 12, which is a Monday, for Veterans Day, being observed. November 22, Thursday, which is Thanksgiving. November 23, which is Friday, the day after Thanksgiving. December 24, which is a Monday, is the floating holiday. December 25, which is a Tuesday, is Christmas Day. January 1, which is a Tuesday, is New Year's Day. January 21, which is a Monday, is Martin Luther Day. February 18, Monday, is President's Day, and May 27, Monday, is Memorial Day.
Thank you. Motion to adopt the 2018-2019 holiday schedule as presented.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, fire department membership status change, so I need a motion to change the status of Ronald Presty from inactive to active effective immediately, as requested by Chief Scott McLennan.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, old business. I need a motion to introduce introductory local law six of 2018, amending Chapter 310 of the Code of the Village of Woodbury to clarify and expand uses permitted in the transit village zoning district.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have an insurance policy renewal for fiscal year 2018-2019, and there's a little catch here. For an additional $693, we could add coverage for cyber breach and liability coverage. So, right now, the proposal we have for our insurance is $137,345.69, and for an additional $693, we could add cyber breach and liability coverage. So, we have a choice. We could just, you know, approve the insurance that we normally have every year for $137,345, or we could add $693 to that, and we would have, we'd have coverage for cyber breach and liability coverage.
Do we know what the additional limits are of that coverage, or what the limits are of the coverage for the additional expense?
It was in the packet I sent out to you.
Yeah, I think there was an endorsement.
Sorry, I didn't see that one.
That's okay. Was it in, it was in there, right?
Yeah.
If not, I have it here, if you want to look at it.
I mean, right now, we have no coverage for cyber breach, so I--
I had looked into that kind of stuff a long time ago, and the limits were pretty low, and the expense was pretty high, which is why I was asking the question, but from what I know now, the limits are usually a lot higher, and that seems to be a very reasonable expense for the coverage, so.
Then we can always, if it doesn't pan out, we can always cancel it next year.
The limits are, look like pretty much a half a million on computer fraud, funds transfer fraud, 300,000, computer fraud, 300,000, with a $2,500 to dub.
I think it's well worth it, because we have nothing at this moment, and to have something, I mean, so far, we haven't had a problem, but, you know, from listening to the news every week, we seems to, somebody--
Yeah.
And we do have, you know, information on our system.
I'm in favor. It's a good idea.
All right, then, I'm going to ask for a motion to accept the proposal received from Marshall and Sterling for insurance coverage for the fiscal year 2018-19 totaling $137,354.69, plus adding the cyber breach and liability coverage at a cost of $693.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any more discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion to approve a filming permit to be issued to Community Films for the filming of a commercial at Woodbury Common, May 8 through the 11th. Insurance requirements have been met, and the permit fee has been paid.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Road closure request, motion to approve the closure of Sutherland Drive from Washington to Thayer on June 23, 2018, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., for the residents of this area to hold a block party.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. That's great.
Yeah.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have an extra item tonight. It's another road closure request. This one is for Valley Avenue, for the farmer's market. So I need a motion to approve the closure of Valley Avenue from Peroni Circle to Peroni Lane on Sundays beginning June 3 through November 18, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., for the Woodbury Chamber of Commerce to hold the farmer's market.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just very excited.
Very excited?
Can only park for two hours while whatever?
Can't wait to get down there and--
No, it's not on Sunday. No, you can't park there anyways.
No restrictions on Sundays.
Let's approve this before we start high-fiving.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye. Beautiful.
Okay, that concludes our business for this evening, so with that, I'm going to go out to the public for a comment. Anybody in the first row? It's very rude to be on your phone here when you're at this meeting. Anybody in the second row? Anybody in the third row?
I wasn't prepared to say anything, but I want to--
Who are you?
What? Oh, Jojen Zarrow.
You weren't.
President of the--
Yeah, what happened?
President of the Woodbury Chamber of Commerce, okay. I want to thank you guys for doing this. I think it's going to be great for the community. Everybody else in Orange County has a farmer's market, so I think it's going to be a good thing for us. We have a lot of good vendors coming down. All the proper paperwork's going to be handed in, so, again, I really appreciate it, and I think it's going to be great for the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joey.
I agree, Joey. I think it's going to be great for the community also, so. Anybody in the fourth row? Anybody at all? Going once, going twice, going three times?
A lady.
Okay. All right, with that--
These meetings are so much cooler than the other ones.
Maria, you have anything? Buddy?
Nothing. I just want to welcome Mr. Kraus back. Good to have Neil back here. Dilly-dilly.
Dilly.
Dilly-dilly.
Neil, now that you're back, do you have anything to say?
There we go. I just want to personally just thank the people in this community, and there were a lot of people, for the support they gave me when I was in the hospital, providing transportation for Robin and all that, is there were just a tremendous outpouring of goodwill and people offering to help in all different ways, and I just appreciate that, and I thank you all. And this includes everybody on this board and everybody out there. Just thank you.
Well, thank you, Neil. It's good to have you back.
Man, I had to follow that.
Yeah, there was almost tears there, so.
I know, I was with it. Just want to say, really looking forward to this farmer's market. Wandered down to the store about two weeks ago undercover, bought some salmon, was probably the best salmon we had in a long time, so thank you. I made my wife happy, but it's great. The community's picking up in a lot of different areas, and just as one more thing, that's just making it a brighter place and a nicer place to live, so thank you. So, that's all I have.
Well, thank you.
Well, as Tom said, dilly-dilly. It's fabulous, very excited about the farmer's market.
Tim, you got anything, or is that it? Tim, you got anything, or is that it?
I just spoke, right?
Well, I didn't, I didn't give you the cue, that's all. Does he have anything?
I do.
All right.
June 9, the organizations that have come together to benefit different things in the community, the Lions Club, the WCA, known as the Muns Club, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Knights of Columbus, and this time, we're adding on the Highland Mills Fire Company, are coming together to do a fundraiser for Michael Hansen. Those of you who grew up and live in Woodbury and are involved should know who Michael Hansen is. He's a very dedicated individual to this community. He was a responder down at 9/11, and he needs some assistance from us, after he's done so much for us. I'm getting chills. So, we're having a all-you-can-eat barbecue on June 9 at the St. Patrick's Church parking lot, starting at 6:30? 6 o'clock? That's what I said, at 6 o'clock. And then, at 7:30 is post-time, yes, I'm a gambler, for a night at the races inside the gymnasium at the church. Again, all money raised will go towards Mr. Hansen's for his needs that he has right now, so we hope everybody, once again, comes out and not only attends a great community function, but also it will help a gentleman that has done great things for this community. He usually emcees a 911 ceremony, so if you've been to that over at the Village Hall Firehouse, you might know him from there. Really, really a great guy who does, again, a lot for this community, so please come out and support that, and I think that's all.
Okay, thank you. I just have a quick question. I believe there's a $50 family fee, does that include the barbecue and the races?
The races are completely separate, that's betting, you know, just like if you go to the horse, go justify. The $50, there's three, thanks, Mike, for, I forgot, sorry. There's three sets of tickets, there's a child ticket, which is 10, there's an adult ticket, which is 20, and there's a family ticket, which is 50, and it's all-you-can-eat, so I know that makes you excited.
I'm not supposed to eat that.
Hamburger, hot dogs, and chicken, I think we're going to do, and all the fixins, some salads, Joey's doing all the cooking, I'm doing all the gambling, so it'll be a nice time. The Knights have done the night, the night of the races before, and it's been a very successful event, and Joey's done barbecues before, and it's been a successful event, so we hope you all come out. Tickets are available in my office, here at Town Hall, Town Clerk's office, and I believe there are individuals selling tickets for the barbecue after masses at St. Patrick's, and you're going to mention the t-shirts?
Yeah.
Okay, and I'm going to turn the mic over to Mike now.
Well, the one thing I just, so, to go into the races after the barbecue, is there an additional cost?
There's no cost to go into the races, but there is to bet on the horses.
So, the $50 family is a great deal, because you could bring your whole family, eat up a storm, and then go into the races, and, but if you bet on a horse, you're going to have to pull out some extra money.
Or if you wanted to give more money, you can. Don't be giving away all the goods.
Okay, thank you so much, that's, I'm sorry, go ahead, come up to the mic, though.
Just state your name and what hat you're wearing now.
You know my name, it's Georgians Arrow, I don't know what hat I'm wearing, but anyway, if anybody wants to sponsor a race, it's $100, and like it's, like it's me, Skyline, it'll be Skyline, whatever. If you want to sponsor a race and all the horses, it's $350. So, if anybody wants, as a business or whatever, oh, I'm sorry, did, I, I thought you-
You got really excited.
And you can name the horses.
And you can name all the horses, so if somebody just wants to sponsor a race, they could donate $100, but they want to sponsor the whole thing, it's $350.
All right, so this is really going to be a dumb question, but we're not actually going to have horses there, right?
No, you got to, it's old, it's old films that they're going to do on the thing, maybe, you know, some old timer be there and know that race, and he'll be able to, you know, whatever. So, they're going to just show films of horses, and you're going to bet, and-
Oh, that sounds cool.
It comes in a sealed DVD, so nobody knows which races it's from, or what year, or from what track, or anything like that.
It's a tea biscuit in there.
Yeah, so you got to like-
And just remember, it's for a good charity, a good cause.
If the horse looks like Secretariat, bet it.
That's it. His name's Secret looks like, just one more thing is, on the Mike Hansen thing, is there are t-shirts that are being sold that talk about Team Hansen. I think they're available at $20 each, it's all over Facebook and stuff like that, they're available, I think, in dark blue with white print, and dark gray with a gray with a darker print, and encourage people out there. Mike has done a lot, you know, Oklahoma bombing, and all the other stuff in additions to 9/11, and he's just done a lot for this community and its nation.
All right, thanks, Neil. I'll just add to what Neil just said, there are t-shirts, the Fight for Mike t-shirts, they can be purchased at the Firehouse for $20, Neil already told you the colors they come in, because he's the fashion guy. Starting this Friday, though, they're supposed to be available at Village Hall also during the day, from 8 to 4, I'm 9 to 5, I'm sorry. They will also be available at the Firehouse and Village Hall. I believe you could stop by on Monday nights, when they're doing Drill Night, and get a shirt, they're $20 each, or during the week, during business hours, you could stop by Village Hall, starting tomorrow, hopefully next week. But anyway, I also wanted to mention that the Lions are holding a food drive and a free community breakfast to benefit the Highland Mills Food Pantry, Saturday, May 19, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., at the Central Valley Methodist Church, 12 Smith Clover Road, Central Valley. That's a great event, we're going to be coordinating it with the Boy Scouts in town, and we're just going to try to, you know, collect food for the food pantry, so if you want to come get a free breakfast, it is free, but we ask that you bring a food donation, or you can make a contribution to the food pantry. And again, that is May 19, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. That's all I have, so I don't think there's anything else, so with that, I'm going to